Good.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, we are blessed to have councilperson Wade to lead us in our prayer and vice president Valie to lead us in the pledge.
Let's bow our heads, prepare our hearts. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we come humbly before you today and ask you to continue to watch over our country, our people, our citizens, our employees of the county. Put arms around the ones that have been infected by this virus that has crippled our country. We ask you to continue to put your arms of comfort around all of us here today, all the ones that are protecting our freedoms worldwide. Give us all mercies in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, my gosh. Call the meeting to order. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, if there are any changes or modifications to the agenda for Thursday, March 26th, I'm moved to be approved.
Have a motion on the floor. Second by Ms. Mauch, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, you have two internal budget revisions?
Purchase order.
Purchase order. Any questions? That's why I skipped over.
Got it. You just automatically assumed that Tracy was...
Screwed up somewhere, right?
I have two internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration. The first is Department 405 Prosecuting Attorney. The Honorable Katie Delagati has requested that she be allowed to reduce line 221 training and education by $2,000. The current unencumbered fund balance is $8,925 with 10.75% spent to date and increase line 341 supplies and materials by $2,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $1,012.13 with 79.75% spent to date. And Mrs. Delagati just wants to make sure that she does have adequate funding in there for the remainder of the fiscal year. The second request is Department 411 fiduciary. Mrs. Petry is requesting that she be allowed to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $100. Current unencumbered fund balance is $2,806.13 with 36.22% spent to date and increase line 218 postage, which currently does not have a balance, by $100. And that's to pay for FedEx shipment of a wheel to Washington County.
Real good reason that she put in there, too.
Very specific.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, don't usually get it filled out that well.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? Okay, moving on to change of status. We have a new recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections, for Matthew Parker as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $32,475, effective April 16, 2020. Change in status received from Mike Lying, Chief Court Marshal for Ernest Reed. Salary increased from $35,000 to $36,000 for five-year anniversary effective February 15, 2020. Change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Sarah Behan, Bealing. She has been promoted from floor supervisor with a salary increase from $29,665 to $30,400 effective March 30, 2020. Change of status received from Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Curtis Trenary. He is going from assistant supervisor to supervisor with a salary increase from $41,146 to $46,260 effective January 1, 2020.
Is everybody in that department supervisor?
Well, Mr. Trenary was on your change of status last week. And apparently, Mr. Hess put the wrong effective date in it. So that's a correction to the effective date. But I will say that the recommendation for Sarah Behan, we now have two floor supervisors. Last week, Christina Eisenberg was promoted to floor supervisor.
What is a floor supervisor? Supervise the floor?
Well, they supervise the front staff.
And the ones for the back staff, ones for the front staff?
I guess. Now, I have... I will let you know that I've talked to Mr. Hess about adequate funding for these positions. I have not run the numbers, but he assures me that he has the money.
Well, he would because he's like that.
Well, he's got a resignation, right?
That's in the packet also.
Yeah, that's what we discussed. He said with that, he has adequate funding for a whole year, not just for...
But that's a personal property supervisor.
Right.
Don't want to miss one of the supervisory...
All right.
I've never heard of a floor supervisor.
Next is a letter resignation received from Circuit Clerk's Office for Brittany Knight, effective March 18, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the County Clerk's Office for Nicole Griffin, effective March 19, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Assessor's Office for Florence Nolan, effective May 29, 2020. Okay, I'm sorry. Retiring.
What she said.
All right. Any questions on change of status or additional comments? If not, we have approval minutes for March 12, 2020. Everyone was present. Any changes or corrections? County Council calendars will be here next Thursday at 9:30 a.m. here in the chamber. We also have our boards and commissions. We have Ms. Mauch on... We have Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections, on WEPN tomorrow at 9 a.m. On Tuesday of next week, on the 31st, we have 5 p.m. library board. We also have the board and commission are wide open next week. We have on next Friday, we have someone on WEPN at 9 a.m. Who's filling that spot? I don't know. Questions or changes, corrections? Okay, we have a proclamation for housing month. SCBG broadband grant. Questions on that proclamation?
Who sponsored?
It's for one of the grants that they need to submit.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Just over a second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Davis, if you want to go ahead and do the state budget revision number nine, Fund Zero One, for me, please.
All right. You have in front of you state budget revision, zero, zero, nine, for your consideration. Since last month's state budget revision, we've had 23 checks and ACHs totaling $300... Or $324,298. Just one or two things as one of the smaller state budget revisions that we have as far as the number of checks and ACHs, but we have had some significant checks and some significant payments. Just a couple for your attention. We did receive a check for 60... An ACH for $65,700 from the state of West Virginia, which is the continued reimbursement of the specialized hazmat equipment that we've been buying through grants. So the capital account for emergency services, we're allowing to run into the red. In fact, significantly has a significant...
Definitely.
A big deficit.
You sound like me.
Right now, and this $65,700, we'll put it back in the black. We also see, received the partial reimbursement for the Assistant APA and the Prosecuting Attorney from Haida. We've received that check for $24,999. And we received a check from the state of West Virginia in the amount of $134,855, which is our 2017 EMPG grant reimbursement. So they typically run about three years behind, so we're starting to get some of those payments. I'm recommending that the $32,954 in payments for services be put back into the Information Technology Department. Part of that is actually... Find it here. We did receive $16,580 reimbursement for DRC grant, through a DRC grant for IT equipment. The majority of the $324,299 will be put into your contingency account in the amount of $200,575. As I said, the $65,700 will go into capital outlay and $25,069 will go into the central garage account. You'll notice that we've received one, two, three, four, five checks from West Virginia Court for auto claims for six vehicles. The one auto claim was when one of our 2019 Dodge Durangos ran into another one of our 2019 Dodge Durangos, and they treated it as one claim, so we only had one deductible. I will tell you, and I asked Gary to come in. We, because of the number of auto accidents in our Sheriff's Department, we're down five cruisers and we need seven to have backups. So in the very, very, very near future, we're going to have to come to the council and request that we go out to bid for cruisers.
Does it seem to you, to me, it seems, that since we've enacted this auto, automatic replacement of vehicles, they've almost become less important that we're taking better care of them?
It does appear that way. And then the one thing that I was going to suggest is, keep some of the old ones for spares. Not, not... But for this time forward, we're not going to strip them down. We're going to keep a couple of them for spares.
It's like we're playing bumper cars sometimes.
Now, and all the vehicles except the Jeep Liberty, which was one of the older Jeep Liberties, they're all Sheriff's Department vehicles.
Keep three of them for spares. Bears, that's rotation. Our equipment, if you can. Somebody else has another idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too.
Do something.
I have bicycles over there.
Two spiders over there?
Yeah, got two spiders over there.
How many miles is on those spiders?
And the situation is...
I'd be surprised if you know that many.
And Mr. Mauch, they also replaced the motors, wasn't it, in the last two years under Kenny? So...
No, not those. Those were four.
Okay, they were four words. Excuse me.
Yeah, one, four words.
Okay, sorry. Stand corrected.
I've never, ever seen any spiders on the road, other than parking lot train.
I've seen them in the park.
All right. Need a motion to approve the state budget revision number nine, Fund Zero Zero One.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President, we have a 10 o'clock bid opening. And as you see, our three key public safety, public health officials are here to give you an update. But before we do that, we just received a five-minute... We just received an email from Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield that they asked that it be distributed to all of their members, which would be all of our employees. It's a very, very good video. If you would allow, I'd like to show it here, so you know what's going on for our employees.
Be great.
Now it is 94, 97.
That's just like being home.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So let's go over what we know.
It might be a little different.
Welcome. Today's presentation features important messages. Otherwise, no this coronavirus. It's a review of recent communications that have been sent to our Highmark members to assist you and your family during this time of uncertainty. So let's go over what we know about the COVID-19 virus. COVID-19, aka the coronavirus, was first identified in December 2019 on China. It has since spread internationally, including the United States. Symptoms are flu-like, fever, cough, and shortness of breath. However, it is more contagious than the seasonal flu. There's no vaccine or antiviral treatment for the coronavirus as we speak today. It can lead to severe respiratory illness like pneumonia in about 15% of cases, be fatal in about 2% of cases, which is more than the flu, plus the previous coronavirus outbreaks. There are many ways for you to protect yourself. Avoid people who are sneezing, wheezing, or coughing. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use alcohol-based hand sanitizer if soap and water aren't available. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. They commonly use surfaces often. Get a flu shot if you haven't already. You're at a greater risk of getting seasonal flu than the coronavirus. Call your PCP for answers on the coronavirus, the flu, or any health-related questions. If you don't have a doctor, you can use Highmark's online Find a Doctor program at the website on the screen or listed on the back of your member identification card. There is a coronavirus site, CDC website, which also includes a fact sheet of information. So what else can you do as a Highmark member to keep yourself safe? First and foremost, always be called and be safe. Anxiety can create stress for you as an individual and your family, so try to remember to be called. Highmark is committed to your help, help of our community. www.highmarkanswers.com offers answers to frequently asked questions, tips to help keep you and your family safe, and information on where to go and when if you are feeling ill. COVID-19 testing is being covered 100% but recommended by a medical professional. For information on your benefits, you can contact the customer service number, which is on the back of your member identification card. You have telemedicine access. All copays, deductibles, and co-insurances for telemedicine visits are waived for the next 90 days beginning March 13, 2020. This includes behavioral health visits if you're feeling stressed or anxious. Safest place you could be is home. Make sure you have enough medication. You have Highmark prescription coverage. You can now obtain 30-day refills for your maintenance medication before the fill date. Your nurses can help you with the additional refill. You're here to help and are always the clinic worker all the way. One of the quickest ways to reach the help you need is the member service number on the back of your Highmark member identification card. The direct path to hear choices, counseling, and informed suggestions on your next steps. If you have access to telemedicine, you can be seen virtually for free and you'll get guidance for next steps for treatment. Sign up for telemedicine by accessing the Highmark member website. Address can be found on the back of your Highmark member ID card. To log into the site, select the virtual medicine link toward the bottom of the page. This link will route you to your selected telemedicine provider. Telemedicine is a service that provides you with the capability to be treated by a U.S. Board certified physician, 847, 365 days a year, either by phone or video consultation. This service can also be a great alternative to urgent care. In fact, telemedicine is able to diagnose and treat 90% of what urgent care centers treat. Telemedicine providers can also prescribe medication. If you prefer to be treated by your primary care physician, be sure to first call your doctor's office to explain your symptoms. This is in order to keep yourself, others can maybe treat you safe. Please reference www.highmarkanswers.com for any additional information you may need. Remember, your hygiene plays a key role in preventing the spread of the coronavirus, along with social distancing. If you believe you're feeling the symptoms or have been in contact with a person who has the coronavirus, try your care doctor or access telemedicine to inform them of your situation. Must go directly to the hospital, call them in advance so that they can provide you with direction on where to enter their facility to avoid spread of the virus. On behalf of Highmark, most importantly, be called, be safe, and thank you for being a Highmark member.
How's this being distributed to the employees?
Well, it came to us. They asked us to distribute it to our employees.
So how are you going on?
Well, we just, we just got it half hour before we came in here. I wanted the council to see it, to make sure you're okay with us pushing it out over our email. Bills it down. Okay? Okay. We'll get that out today. Can we push it out beyond our employees? I know we have others that...
That's going to save. I couldn't, Chad put it on. Could Chad put it out there as a link?
Sure.
There's lots of Highmark.
Okay. Because the Health Department's PEIA.
Right.
I don't know if PEIA is...
The information is good.
Yeah.
It's not...
Some of them.
You know, we didn't touch with them, but the information is solid.
Yeah. Well, we'll have it out today. We thought, Penny and I both looked at it real quick this morning, and I wanted the council to see it, to make sure that you were okay with us pushing it out.
I've heard, right? How would it be on the status?
Flu A, Flu B.
All right, now it's 10 o'clock.
All right. Now we have a bid opening for... Let me see. Bid opening for spotlights and prisoner cargo barrier for some of the, I guess, vehicles that were purchased.
Yes, sir. If the council will recall, several weeks ago, the sheriff and chief deputy Gary appeared before the council and requested that the sheriff be allowed to pay for the installation of spotlights in rear cargo barriers for the 14... It was the very first group of 2018 Ford interceptors that we put out for bid as part of our fleet replacement program. We, we put together the specifications. The specifications were reviewed by the Sheriff's Department. Priority install of Montgomery, located in Montgomery County, did all the outfitting for us. And there were two components of the first round of outfitting that slipped by all of us. And that was the rear, was the spotlight, which is mounted on the driver's side, so that...
The old Barney fights spotlight.
Exactly.
Move around.
And there's no rear protection that would prevent a prisoner, someone being transported into the back of these Ford interceptors from kicking their way into the, into the back part where the equipment's stored. So sheriff has requested that he be allowed, had requested that he be allowed to retrofit these 14, 2018 Ford police interceptors with, with that equipment, and that he would, he would take care of the payment, and the council approved it. So the RFP was put together. It was direct mailed to 12345. Outfitters that we've worked with in the past include, including priority install. It was advertised in the Mark'sburg Journal on March the 9th, 2020. We do have certification publication in the file and also in your packet. The deadline for bids was Wednesday, 4 o'clock yesterday, Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, and we only received one bid, and that bid is from West Virginia Public Safety out in Morgantown, who we do a lot of work with. This is a fairly small job, which is probably why priority install.
How's it going to be done? Okay, good. I was going to say, we found, you said seven cars, we've got 18 of these. All the purchases after this, already have... All the purchases after this, already have.
Yeah, that is correct. Everything passed up. This is the twenty-eight bid, our very first one, as Mr. Davis said. We all missed it, rookie mistake. So basically, they have a, they have a jig that they set and tap the A pillar with, put the spotlight in, run the power down in the fuse box, and then the rear cargo barriers can all happen either in the existing facilities building, if weather is inclement or right in the weather, that is part of the plan.
All right, well, it looks like there's two bids on this. Well, one, actually, first client answer is the same. And the one bid is eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents from West Virginia Public Safety Equipment LLC out of, or change, I mean, out of Morgantown, I should say. And then the second bid that they have here is eleven thousand, five twenty-two.
One is, well, one is, the first one's for the equipment, and the second one's for installation.
Is that total for two, or is that?
So lump sum price for equipment, which is, is the first one. Lump sum price for installation is the second bid.
So, so total of twenty-two thousand, eight sixty-six, thirty-four.
For how many?
Fourteen.
Doesn't sound really bad.
So that's parts and length of those.
I mean, you figure by the time they separate the A pillar, drill through and mount, run the cables, and then have to back the seat after, in the back of those things are cargo carriers for their stuff. There's a lot of things just to your agents. They're probably, I would say, several hours in each car.
I would imagine if you could do several in that time, it would definitely save money.
For sure, for sure. But it's a, it's a isolated bid. I mean, that's what they did, that's what they want paid for. And we, we ensured everyone we spoke to that we would schedule and have enough. However many they felt they could do in a day, we'd get them there. Or we weren't running vendor aids.
Right.
So it'd be a day or two, probably.
All right, like I said, for the equipment and install, twenty-two thousand, eight sixty-six, thirty-four.
Seventy-nine, I had a Plymouth Fury III that had the top car. Had that light, started delivering pizzas. And that was, first didn't have, you couldn't look up and see on your phone, you didn't have a phone app. That was really cool, when you could take that spotlight, shine on the houses when you're delivering pizzas.
The only time you used a spotlight. It also says a notation.
A couple pizzas got away from you, didn't they?
The notation says, due to the COVID-19, there, there may be a product delays. We will drop ship and complete work within twenty days of receipt of the questions.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, and we did have it for eleven o'clock, although we knew we'd be running ahead. So discussion and made possible action on the COVID-19. Mr. Burns, would you like to come to us, up to the podium, please, and give us what's going on in the Health Department? And, and bring us, catch us up to speed. We're, we're all pretty much up to speed from the D H H R website. But tell us things that's happening locally, if you would, please.
Try to put a gilt edge.
Hardest thing for us, a lot of us to do is stop touching our faces.
Oh, my God.
I walk around out of like this.
Hands in the pocket. I seen that when you got up.
So we are, we're having a situational awareness meeting each, each and every day at the Health Department with, with the leadership team, which consists of our health officers, the each department head, as well as our health promotion specialists and our epidemiologists. And we're incorporating Zoom technology into that, as well as our board of health chair also attends that meeting. We're incorporating Zoom technologies so we can do the satellite, because starting next week, some of the department heads are going to start practicing, working at home some, one or two days a week, so that we can distance ourself. So we're trying to come up with ideas of how to address this. We, we are, our biggest hurdle, as you may be aware, I'm sure you're aware, is the amount of protective equipment that we're receiving. We received two shipments from the Strategic National Stockpile, and both are very much inadequate. To give you an example of what that is, the Health Department received a total for the Health Department to be distributed between agencies in our community, a box, a total of eight boxes of gloves.
Eight.
Eight boxes of gloves.
You mean?
Boxes, just the boxes with a hundred gloves in a box.
Wow.
Eight.
That's good for about a day.
An hour, depending on how many people are working.
Well, true.
Yeah. How many times you gotta change them?
Every time you take them off, you gotta put a new set on.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, and then we tried to distribute, where do we distribute these to? Whether it's certain amounts of us to go to clinics, the company clinics we have in Berkeley County. Certain amounts of us go to home health, whether it's going to behavioral health agencies. Everyone, did not EMS. We can't distribute five gloves or six gloves per agency based on the breakdown. We have to give a box. If you give, if you put, take the gloves out of a box and put them in a bag, they're considered garbage, because you don't know if they've been used or not used. At least you know when they're coming out of the box, they haven't been used. So same with masks. So we're constantly struggling to try to get supplies so we can get those out to the people that need them.
Bill, how many N-ninety-five masks did you distribute?
I don't know the total breakdown. I want to say, I know for the Health Department's allotment, I want to say it's somewhere around fifty. Fifty N-ninety-five masks. The hospital gets an allotment similar to what the Health Department gets. So we are, there's lots of ideas of how to get additional masks, as I'm sure you'll hear from Mr. Gokunier in a little bit. So he's been helping us and trying to get resources, as well as yesterday's meeting. We also had Senator Unger bid the O-N. So we're, we're pulling out any resources we have. We, we have notices on our Facebook page if people want to, if they have additional N-ninety-five masks that maybe they construction workers are not using, they want to donate to the Health Department, or hand sanitizer that they want to donate, then we'll certainly receive that well and get it distributed out. But that's our biggest hurdle right now. It seems that we, we did, as of this week, close the Health Department for public access. If they have appointments, that seemed to be working fine. We did do a, I want to say, successful harm reduction clinic this week. It was a little difficult. We decided to have it yesterday, and it was rainy, it was cold. But we still, we developed mechanisms in place to protect the staff of the Health Department, as well as the community that's coming in. So the hurdles is just getting the necessary equipment and getting the word out to people. I do every morning an update at eight oh five, L W R and R, ten, with what's happened the day before. So we need to make sure that we are concentrating most definitely on the number of positive cases that are coming through, not necessarily on the negatives, because those are the ones that are changing drastically each and every day. Just earlier this week, it was twenty, twenty cases. And, and then just last night's update, which came apparently nine thirty or so, it was in the fifties. So we're continuing, just one day went from twenty to thirty-nine.
Were there two cases in Berkeley County?
Yes, we're still investigating. Some of these may not necessarily be Berkeley County residents.
I wondered if they have been.
And we also have to remember, these are numbers that have been reported to the state lab, that the state lab did the test. These are not numbers that necessarily come from private labs, such as Quest Lab. They can do their own, but they are not required to report to the state lab.
Oh, is that right? Because I was thinking that on the D H H R website says those public and private labs.
Not, not completely. And these also are not, also numbers of people that just stayed at home and took care of theirself, like quarantine, and they did not seek medical attention. We do know for a fact.
Right now, is there anybody in West Virginia that's critical after Washington State so far?
Washington.
Washington County?
Washington County.
Oh, okay, sorry.
What we did find out is that the, whereas the state sends out so many tests and kits, their state lab, our state lab was not set up to do statewide testing for something this massive. Their kits, testing supplies, media, swabs are in very limited supply now at state level. They've not received any additional, they are expecting to. But they are, their directives now have kind of switched to, you know, try to do as many referrals to local labs as possible. And the state would handle outbreaks or cluster investigations, what they normally have in the past anyway. But their supplies are very limited at the state level. When I say limited, it's a hundred or so still in that they can utilize.
Is, there's some new tests that's on the horizon possibly, right?
We've not received those yet.
Okay, the simplified test, right?
And a quicker turnaround time.
Right.
Initially, there was a, the turnaround time was a lot quicker through the state labs, or through the local labs. Now it seems that the tests that go to the state labs are quicker turnaround time than what you could get through our local labs.
And one of those can be done by raw blood, is that right?
Not sure.
This, so the council knows, Bill talks about the shortage of equipment. Of course, we've been in touch with the hospital, and the hospital, they run out of N-ninety-five masks and surgical face shield, or the, the face shields and the, and the gowns. Last week, we thought we had three thousand N-ninety-five masks. We were told by one of our, one of our suppliers, one of the county suppliers, that they have a stockpile of a hundred thousand. So spoke to council president Copenhaber, and he said, we'll order three thousand, unless they can get them to us in two days. If they can get them to us, they can guarantee delivery within forty-eight hours, get five thousand. They could not guarantee delivery within that time period. So we cut a purchase order for three thousand. By the time we got it to them, the state had already bought all one hundred thousand N-ninety-five masks. Our legal director knows people.
He knows people.
He knows people. We think, and we've already cut the purchase order, we think we have seven thousand masks, N-ninety-five masks coming. We're fairly certain. They're being delivered here. And then we'll work with, with Eddie and Bill with the distribution. I'm hoping that we can help the hospital out some too. We don't know a delivery. Hopefully, we'll know today. It's going to cost us about forty-two thousand dollars. Pause a little bit, and then we submit, bring our reimbursement to FEMA. We'll try to get reimbursed as much as we can. So I think seven, if we can get seven thousand masks, that.
That's huge.
That will help.
And, and we're tracking our expenses as well for participation in reimbursement with FEMA. Our concerns are, of course, for staff, the Health Department, whether you're frontline workers, as well as hospital personnel. But concerns is for our first responders, EMS, Sheriff's Department, city, state police, that we're telling people, you know, if you are, if you suspect you may have coronavirus, or if for any reason you're being, having interactions with law enforcement, let them know so that at least they can prepare. You call nine-one-one, make sure you identify that so they can prepare themselves as much as possible before they interact with the public, so that they can try to provide some minimal protection for our first responders, law enforcement. But of course, we're still telling everybody to stay at home as much as possible if you are a suspected case, until your confirmation comes back. Self-quarantine yourself at home, use separate bathrooms, keep away from your family as much as possible. But stay at home, work from home. That's the way we're going to flatten this, flatten this further, peak out as quick as possible. But each day, we are not at that point where we're flattening anything yet, because you can see by our active cases, we are increasing each and every day, we have not achieved. And it's not going to be for a while. It's going to be a marathon, and we're going to be through. It is not going to be finished by the first part of April. Unless something miraculous happens, divine intervention, it's not going to happen by the.
And Bill, I, I agree with you. I've always said that, you know, the thing that, and I think they're even actually talking about now is, I don't want anybody to think that, that everybody says fourteen, fifteen-day window, and trying to encourage everybody to reduce travel and things of that nature. But you and I and everybody in this room knows that that's not going to be, you're not going to turn the light switch off as, or on, and say we're back to normal. This could even re-erupt down the road, months down the road. The only thing that's really going to get things feeling very comfortable again down the road would be a vaccine or treatment. More so the vaccine than the treatment, but it's going to take both. So that's, that's the thing that I think, I think this two-week, fifteen-day window is almost, I think it's giving people hope prematurely.
Absolutely.
Right, and.
Would not agree more.
But, so I don't think things are going to be back to normal for a while. But at the same time, you know, got to carry on and with the caution as we've all expressed. Be smart about our movement, but, you know. I was talking a little bit this morning about how this can be even seasonal, and different seasons would, would react differently to the virus. Would react different to the season. That's all it is.
We, we've definitely had to take on new measures. I think our rainy day funds are going to be reclassified to pandemic day funds, of how we use those extra dollars. And, and our life, as we know, it has drastically changed. You all, great proactive approach to limiting the number of people, people coming in for the council meetings. And if you come in the Health Department, you do have an appointment to come in. The first person you're going to be met with is somebody with a thermometer, and they're going to take your temperature. They're going to ask you if you have any, any symptoms that we have listed. You're going to be screened before you even see anybody else in the Health Department.
Bill, I'm glad you brought that up, because some, an employee asked me yesterday, why we, the county doesn't have someone standing.
You have somebody standing at the door.
We do, but they thought we should be taking temperatures. The problem, and I, I did a little bit of research, the problem is, of course, you can't use a thermometer, even with the cover that you stick in someone's mouth. Even with the ones that you run across someone's forehead, you know, anytime you get that close to someone's face.
You're not keeping your six-foot distance.
Right, and, and then those thermometers have to be sanitized, which we don't have medical expertise. I did find a baby thermometer, you know how they use baby.
I got lasers, I got lasers.
Those don't, those don't work.
So you can shoot somebody.
I actually purchased one of those, and it's about a ten-degree difference.
Is that right?
They're not accurate. They may be accurate, I, I don't know if it's just skin temperatures, it does not detect, detect correctly with. Maybe it's solid surfaces, it will, but, and that's what they're made for, they're not used. Skin temperatures.
It's being close.
They're very much.
It probably makes a difference on the one you have, the, the type too, because I've, I've had, I've had, I've got, I've got a couple of different ones. And most of them I have don't do a very good job, but I've got one, and I forget what brand it is, that does do a really good job. But I use it for like sensing temperatures coming out of heat ducts, those type of things. Sending temperatures on solid surfaces, like heat pumps, that type of thing, see what the temperature is. But you may be right, they may not work on skin.
I've not found one that works accurately yet.
Everything I read, a lot smarter than me, says that employers should not be, should not be doing that.
You're not, not a personnel.
We're not medical. Thank you very much. I wanted to go on record, it's not that we didn't look into it, it's just that we, when I read, we should.
We have trained staff at the Health Department that are doing that screening. We have trained staff at health departments that are doing that screening.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, your main issue is protective here?
Protective here. And I, I think, you know, uh, as we're telling, uh, all of our elected officials statewide, nation, capital, you know, the message to get out to people, you know, this is not going to get over quickly and you do really need to stay at home as much as possible. And isolate yourself as much as possible. No matter what you may hear, it's not going to be over with so that it's completely over with or we can feel comfortable again. Parrot box.
Bill, have you got any reports? I know I've, on the news, um, like, like down in DC, they actually had to put the National Capitol Police down by the title base to keep down, like with cherry blossoms, all the way they were told not to come. Um, California, um, Florida, they're actually having a coronavirus parties. Um, where people are congregating in groups in spite of, have, have you had any reports of that here? I mean, are, is there anything that we can be doing to?
Not, not locally, we've not, um, with, as we as, well as I'm sure all, everyone here has read the executive order that came down the other day, claiming to stay at home and listed which places were essential services and what was deemed essential services. I've never seen so many places that were considered essential services. Even the gaming place I saw yesterday, they considered itself a central service. Um, it's just incredible. And the list of places that were not essential services was six, about six lines, um, which detailed bowling alleys, theaters, adult entertainment, places like that. Yes. But essential services was huge. Um, started in one section three, went from A to X of all the essential services, basically whatever you can think of. Whether, whether it's construction, law offices, all those, all those are essential.
It looked to me when I read the order four times, trying to figure out what was different. It looked to me like there was no difference in what existed in the first order. Count on both hands, none of the things that are not essential. Everything else is essential, although the disclaimer in the governor's order is that the intent of this order is to keep, uh, fewer people from congregating and, uh, keep your distance. It's just hard to do when law officers are considered essential, CPAs are considered essential, liquor stores are considered essential.
Gun shops?
Sorry.
Gun shops.
I passed that. I didn't see that. So, I'm glad it didn't.
Bill, uh, there's, I was on the radio the other day and one of the questions that was asked was, um, what, what can you do? Um, and, you know, uh, I have, I've had a couple of people call me up and say, there's a problem with this place. This place has dozens of people inside of it at any given time and they continue to do business. Is there something that can be done with that? I mean, is that, are, are we talking, if it's a, if it's a business that is inspected by the health department, can, can these people call and say, hey, there's a problem. This, this business is doing business and you guys have the opportunity to say, no, we can't do business anymore. I mean, what's, what's the regulation to this?
Well, believe me, tattling is alive and well. Um, I'm getting complaints all the time on our website that people want to tell them they're fellow competitor or whatever. Um, usually it's, it's in relation to convenience stores. Kind of harped on the key, the convenience stores are definitely taking measures in place to try to limit the exposure risk when you're going in, whether it's using touchscreens, keeping those more sanitized more often, um, removing the ability to use self-serve um, equipment for drinks, exactly. So, we are working with them as much as possible. Um, they don't have security guards that can put at the door and say, we've ordered. You know, some of these places, big stat, big convenience store establishments may have that ten or more people on staff to address the needs of the community. Now, they are in essential services listed by the governor. So, they're remaining open as well as grocery stores, gas stations. But they don't have security guards to say, well, we've got, we've got eight people on staff. We can only allow two people in the, from the community in at a time. Just impossible to do, but they are stepping up measures that we have spoken with their corporate offices. We're calling every day, whether it's hotels and motels, convenience store chains, we're calling them every day to give them updated guidances. And they're telling us, and it's really encouraging what additional measures are going, going in place. Uh, whether it's sanitizing the fuel pump handles more often, uh, putting gloves, being available for those or, or, uh, or like I said, inside discontinuing self-service. It's really encouraging what they're going. Um, but to say, say that the health department have reason to go ahead and close you because you, you have twelve people in your store, we just don't have that authority.
So, so, but the question is, who does? I mean, yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's a, if there's an order by the governor to do something, what, uh, what, uh, what substance does that have if there's no oversight to the order?
I can tell you that it would be so over tasking for law enforcement to be able to go around and arrest everybody that, or arrest a convenience store manager or owner that's in place because they get violated and ten, ten or more people recommended by the CDC. I don't have an answer to that.
Right. I mean, that's, that, and that's exactly my point on it. How could you possibly, um, how could you possibly create an oversight for everything that's going on?
We as regulators of food service industries do not have the authority to arrest nor do we have the authority to impose fines. We could leave that up to the magistrate's office, but I can tell you that's, that's going to be overwhelming.
Well, I was in Martin, yes, and the checkout clerk had gloves on. How long she'd been wearing those gloves? I haven't.
But at least she had them.
Yeah. No, no, no. I went, I went, I went on Saturday. In fact, the sandwich is still in my truck. I forgot to throw it away. It was Saturday to a, uh, to a drive-thru and I seen the person in front of me getting sandwich in the morning and I thought, well, that's good because the lady handed out, had gloves on. So, then I pulled up to the window and the lady took my money with the gloves on. I thought, oh, that's good. Then she walked over, opened the cooler, grabbed a piece of meat and an egg, set it on a, a metal thing, stuck it in a microwave, came back over, gave me my change, went back over, grabbed it out with her hands, stuck it on a piece of bread.
Violating everything.
And wrapped it up and handed it to me and I was like, did you just do that?
Welcome to our world.
I was like, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? You know, it's like, yeah.
Sure, Councilman Barnhart will give you horror stories because all his long-term.
Oh, so, I, I But I can tell you that I did not eat the sandwich. And, but, but you know, that's the, the benefit to that is going to someplace that's visual. I could see what was going on and, you know, if you can't, if I hadn't been able to see that, I wouldn't know what happened.
The other thing when we had your teleconference and they asked if you wanted to do normal? About teleconference, yeah, I guess. All right. Anything else other than, it looks like the, the main thing that's being looked for is N-95, universal mask, surgical mask, gloves, gowns, goggles, face shield and hand sanitizer.
You got it, sir.
We're trying our best to work on that stuff.
Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kearns?
And the staff is all right?
Yes. All present and accounted for.
Everybody lost or not good for anybody or?
I don't know.
And, and right now, even, even, I think you said there's, there's a possibility of two cases and maybe only one case in Berkeley County. That person's going well, home quarantine, is that?
We're, yes, we're working some other cases.
What are the Senatorians?
Um, they're actually going to be doing some monitoring for when the case is coming through, so they're getting trained. Still doing as much normal duties as possible, but according to, you know, the essential services, construction is still an essential service. If they're still having to go out and do wastewater inspections and things of that nature. But they're also going to be working with, uh, um, entering data, um, in our database that we're, that we have now. As positive numbers come along, they'll be going at surveillance as well. So, all hands on deck. Everybody does everything.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew. Your employees cross-trained to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
All right. I, I guess I'll move on to Brian Costello with the EMS. Save Eddie for last, Chief Okener. Um, I will say Brian keeps, uh, me informed of what's going on, that the board, his board informed of what's going on, um, very regularly. Um, and Brian is a superb leader. Short. So, Brian?
I'm, I'll keep it short. I'll try not to replicate. Though already, and of course, we hit the strategic aspect of the stockpile. What did it consist of for the county ambulance corps? Fifteen gowns, sixty masks. So, what does that equate to to us? One thing. Um, you guys already know the if, uh, if we cannot give this free, can we lose healthcare for our people? And of course, all tells us Title VII of nineteen sixty-four provides that needs help specialists to be in there. That's a part of it now, so it's a hell of a lot. We're going to do our job. We're continuing to do our job. As you know, uh, we had our first two cases back in the twenty-fourth of March here in Berkeley County. Within twenty-four hours, county ambulance corps had transported two positive COVID patients. Um, as you know, we spent four, five, six weeks preparing ourselves. Good thing about these two cases was that they were noted positive COVID cases. Um, very first one was a transient case in County that this person came to our county, I guess, to quarantine. Uh, they were being tracked by the health department. They contacted them morning, they participated in the sending first. We would call, we would notify, look at appropriate action, transported that patient. Then three hours, the same crew that transported that patient received a second call. One of the two positive cases that we had here in Berkeley County, that patient is disoriented. And then transported that patient.
And you're transporting them to the hospital?
To, to where? Yes, it's going to the hospital and then the, the hospital, of course, to overmove them however they, they did it. They sent for a call. Our job at that point is to get them to the hospital, notify them. We are here and then they have a crew that comes out, takes the patient to our ambulance. We'll do at that point is doing a quick rapid decon of the unit. Group remains geared. We work with the city of Martinsburg and the VA system. We have decon equipment there that guarantees these complete decon in about twenty-five minutes. And then we go in, do some white down, of course, our staff. They also officer gear, uh, completely disrode all clothing. Beedle goes and power washing machines, our patient. Take them to shower, decon themselves, do what they're supposed to do. And that's returned to service. So, you're looking at a single COVID patient, probably take crew and So, one of the concerns for us is right off the bat, of course, being transient cases in our county. So, when we look at those numbers every day, uh, Chief Lionel Brenner, now, up about six in the morning, sent down to the bed at twelve thirty, one o'clock the following morning, get up, be with the next day. But, uh, what concerns us is right off the bat, we're seeing transient cases in our county. And so, we're looking at numbers on twelve-two testing positive from our health department. That's not including what's moving in without our knowledge. So, I hope that these, as this goes forward, maybe there's some information sharing, say, between Berkeley, Jefferson and Oregon, health departments that they know they have a transient patient, that that information is passed on to that, that local health department and say, hey, we had a positive, they're in your area of rehab. So, be, be prepared. So, that can kind of make a statement. Yeah, we see two, really two. So, you know, that's not without looking at it.
Well, I don't, seems to me it's going to get critical if you get a bunch of COVID cases that you have to transport. You're not going to have the ambulances or the crews necessary to transport them if they got, to get de, disinfected after every transport.
I think it because, it's, as, as we said, there's a lot of risk management and a lot of strategic things, how we do it. We operate five twenty-four hour ambulances and two twelve-hour ambulances. So, if things really get hopping here, there's always that possibility that you can stress the system. Good thing is, is, um, our, I call him, my he's all in place of it. Um, we have reached out. We're talking to the city of Martinsburg as well as all the other agencies. They have adopted some policies that we have to, uh, admit their stuff, but trying to have some continuity across the board. But you're absolutely right. I mean, it's no different anywhere else. It could get, is where you can get overwhelmed. So, the question is, is how far did we move down that chain? Of course, asking mutual aid from another county, disability, that's tough because they got their Do we look to our private contractors and say, hey, do you have the ability that this occurs? That's something I'm currently talking about right now. What that requires is pray that, hey, you understand that our policy becomes her policy. The last thing you want is someone to have a lesser preparedness level to enter that fight. It's just some things that we're working on.
Plus, you have to supply them with all the safety stuff, right?
If, if they did not have it, that would be a consideration. How do we get them to where we need to get them? How do we ensure that they're part of that partnership? Here, so, there's more than just saying, hey, yeah, we'll be more than happy to help you. Um, as you guys know, just a week ago or so, I believe it was, we were in receipt of a memo that was endorsed by our chief where our rescue association said, hey, we, we as a group want this to happen this way. At that time, I don't think we had any positive COVID cases either in this county. Well, all of a sudden, cases pop up and it's like, whoa, 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 whoa. Maybe we need to rethink this. So, we're talking to each individual fire department. They're making their own COVID policies. We received one from South Berkeley a couple of days ago. It kind of matches what they had when they're, lays out some other guidelines for them, decon, things of that nature. Our big concern is, is they want to continue in fashion to assist the search of the community, you know, make them available to them, protect them. Like you said, we, we also, we understand that if they're not feeling this, they need to feel doing it and we also understand that, uh, they should not be looking for a lesser for that. Hey, I don't want to take the bullet. I don't really want to run into a burning building anymore. But I will continue to do that for our medical community. So, other than that, just to give you guys, we like, we're doing daily meetings along with the city, the health department. We're in touch with everything at the hospital. Our medical director, Dr. Michael Lottner, is very involved in everything, keeping us up to date. I'm willing to take a suspected case in, just quickly get back to the chain, see if it's yes or no. Or do we have quarantine stuff in place that we have a suspected person? Will we do that? But our plan is constantly based. Uh, we're now looking at staying as we're, we're pounding our people so that they're home, that's, that's their choice, home, quarantine. We're looking at a lot of stuff. I'm going to, uh, pretty much stop there and open it up to any questions that you guys may have with us.
Are your, are your, all your facilities working properly? You're, you're, you talked about the ways of decontaminating. You have wash machines. I mean, are all those wash machines, your dryers, are your, are your showers? I mean, are all those things that, those are things that, uh, um, were not limited on, um, you know, obviously all these, all these supplies are, are in limit, uh, limited supply. But, uh, those are things that, uh, if those are needs, we could help and find. But those are things that, if those are needs, we could help and find ways to help those types of things.
Yeah, everything that we are housed, you know, those showers and things are maintained because they're used regularly. Not, this, this isn't really new. Anytime we come within a bloodborne pathogen or something like that, that, that's standard policy. Disrobe, shower, put on new uniforms, wash away. That's really nothing new. So we do not have, we are looking to purchase decontamination. Have the characters that can, you know, beyond just the ambulance, as you said.
Is that a spray gun or?
It has an electric, it is a spray. It's a Prox three sixty-six. And with a little bit, I know it's probably gonna be in trouble. I know it deals with solution. It's bad, it's something, but it works. City of Martinsburg's using it for quite a while. VA is using it for quite a while. So I think it's a investment for us. It's not just brand. Positive bases, we have bases, we have candidates. So you have orders, you have flu season, they kind of run rampant through businesses as you do. That's something.
Jim, Jim spoke about, last week, about ultraviolet. He had had a conversation about ultraviolet. Since then, I had seen an article on a newscast about ultraviolet used to decontaminate surfaces, horizontal, vertical surfaces. Is there anything out there that, that would help for, like, inside the ambulance?
Good question. We're still looking at the research. As we said, the nineteen's very big. Learning every day what works, what doesn't. So I know, I heard that thing probably forty-eight hours ago. We're looking to see if there's any data out there that supports that. If it is, what tools are we available? If the data supports it, then how?
Brian, my question was, like, your last statement, decontamination machines, are they readily available and how much are they?
That was the thing. We were waiting for a phone call from a vendor right before I came in. I'm not sure Chief Lionel Britton had received that call or not. But we had a vendor that we could reach it out to. We know, based on trying to look at internet purchases, we push everything to the vendor. So hopefully, when we reach out to that individual, we'll see if they have something available, whether into manufacturers, stockpile, specifically prioritize fire events and those things. But once I have an answer for you, I'll definitely
Because unlike you, I can see where that would not just for this.
No, no, no.
And, you know, I know, I think, correct or wrong, most time, we have eight ambulances out on the road. Seven. And then to take, you know, I think that's gonna be a very important goal to have.
And one of the things I did not mention, with our reserve fleet, we also have the ability that as we're deconning the other one, we have another one. We have one.
Those, okay.
Yeah, we have one. And that one's maybe
So have you thought about seconds? As one's in decon with the machine and it takes a crew to go back in and wipe things? Would that be a, if needed, be a different crew?
It could. If this begins to get caught, that might be something that we look at that you know, we're spit on. We have students that we've had to push out, get school load. We have non-med staff that work with, that we may consider, hey, you know, let's, let's decon and get it, get it cleaned. But, you know, you guys can be like the final white now, prep.
Right. Because, I mean, most others can take the shower fashion and that decon machine can decon an ambulance. So that puts the crew back out.
Yeah.
And somebody else can be wiping it down.
Correct.
To, to keep the rotation going.
And in most of our state, you know, in our central station, we do have two crews that, that would be happening. As, as that crew that's been exposed, preparing itself to get back to the fight. The other crew that supervises, the management team, prepared at that time, will continue to continue that decon to get but like we said, we, we probably put about seven hours a day there on the ground. And then the others, either virtual meetings or at meeting. What's happening, looking at at the end of the day, have a brief briefing of what's happening.
Can you please give us an update on your part of cases? Or I know, I know the ambulance ability, it always has to be geared for the worst and there for the worst, hopefully less. Anything juicy out there that, that you want us on?
Oh, the biggest thing that I want to touch base on is as you as this serving body, you can see the numbers just like that. If they appear to be doubling every forty-eight hours. As we look at the numbers, what's happening here in our county suggests off the table. But it comes from other places in the year. We may have some sort of management factor adding into your guys' decisions. Not just what we're seeing, what tests positive in our health department, but it's also testing positive in county, Jefferson, Morgan, South, right, county. And, you know, we'll keep you guys informed as we move forward.
Well, I mean, stop and think and, you know, that's sometimes we brainstorm all the time. Sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it absolutely doesn't make sense. But I mean,
Yeah.
one of my brainstorm, my thoughts that went through your head is the one of the ways to limit our cases would be to no one is able to get off eighty-one, not unless you prove that you're a resident of Berkeley County. You know, so, and we know that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, because the resources that you take to do that are
Right. Or you, as Dan was saying earlier, some of these retail stores, there's, there's a huge amount of people going into them.
Well, think about the trucks, the rest stops on eighty-one.
Exactly. So it's, it's not only do we try to think of things to do it, but you heard Bill say, even if you put these orders in place, there's no way to enforce them, or there hasn't been a way to enforce them. So we're trying to do the things that we feel that we can control
Yeah.
to a certain degree, help you out. So if you come up with anything that we're not going, other than trying to, if we can get the health department to get more communication. Because I've asked the health department, what about other areas, other areas? You know, are we, and they're saying it takes two days to get information if we can get it.
That, that seems right.
Right. So I'm trying to make my rounds periodically and, and, and the only one that I haven't made my rounds to in recent week is the, the hospital, for obvious reasons. I don't wanna, I know that they may be busy and the last person they need to see is me. But, but they know how to breach myself if they need something.
They, they won't allow us to ask.
Right, so.
Because I didn't ask.
No, actually.
He said no. Just to tell everyone what a great job they're doing and really appreciate it. And they said, I don't it's not that they don't appreciate your support.
Yeah, they got enough.
They only more bodies there than
You have a, you have a relationship with Jefferson and
Um, through our medical director, we do Jefferson County, Morgan County, I would have that's two levels there. Like that. So what you find is there's a lot of data shared, um, agencies. So it's very easy for our to do case or something like Morgan County might be able to try it, but we, we definitely we meet with Angie Gray every day.
The good thing is, all three health departments have the same health officer.
This is true.
Uh, but you don't ever get calls to go into Jefferson and Morgan.
We, we have not. It, it's, you know, as we move forward, we don't know where this can go. And if they come down and where you can reach out to your mutual aid partners and say, guys, we have to protect who we protect. And again, it's always a big concern. What happens when this blows up? People start pulling people out of the game. You look at, you know, customers, sixty-something about it. I mean, we've had much of our part-time people call and say, hey, I'm gonna have to take away time and liability to you. I don't wanna compromise my full-time job. I totally understand that because that's my expectations, my I expect you to be here for us and say, this other agency was a huge one, something like that. But you know, my expectation that it does, if you tell them that for now, you have to back away there. And we understand that, you know, rank that agency, that's what the times call for.
Yep.
That's, that's our scans.
Brian and I have this agreement. We, we're always upfront and honest with people, so he understands, he's very comfortable, I think, to come to me and to tell us if we need to do something different, but we're not going.
Correct. And like, like I said, I'm very confident in the board and the board's trust in me to say, you know, operation here. We don't, we're gonna keep our doors open and comply with order. We did have exposure. But I think it's okay. Business season, I can tell you from day one, it'd be very productive. We're able to process over seventy-three bills of patients. That doesn't mean you're still gonna get revenue in. At least we were able to process it because you don't know what's happening on the distance. And so I don't think our business is failing by doing that, getting involved with hearing. And I can give you a hundred percent credit for this because I was on a whole different avenue on the telework thing. But he came to us, gave us a violent, he had an idea, he had the solution, say that. We put it together and it's easy to work. So whereas, as you guys know, I'm always available, as Doug said, I'm, I'm not gonna compromise my integrity to make everybody feel better. If you ask me, I hope you're asking because you want to honestly, God, true answer. Want somebody to blow smoke up your tail? So I meant personally, you want to honestly, God, answer to my ask.
I can honestly tell you, as counsel always says, we want to know what we need to hear, not what we want.
That's right. Subject, any other questions? I'll get out of here and let him.
But your, your, your your request for protective gear would be the same as Mr. Courage's?
Yeah, I, I, I am, uh, I don't know. I, I, that, that strategic national stockpile was just, that was embarrassing.
Yeah, well, we're
We, we, I mean, as a whole from the county, not just our
We're trying to do what we can on our end. We're, and that's Manny, Northwood on the, on the mask. Tracy, Tracy, I mean, she's also herself on trying to find things. I'm sure Eddie's doing the same. So if we, if we're able to find them, we'll, everybody will know the proof.
Exactly. And we, this is one important piece that I did. So many people from the community, West Virginia State Police come in and say, hey, here I've got fifty masks. And I'm talking quality respirator N ninety-fives that they've given us. West Virginia State Police called two days ago, here we have a, you know, a different quality than ninety-five. They provided us three cases of that. And church will come in, whoever did. So getting stuff in, so that's there to replenish it. So the community stepped in, I mean, they even went out and said, hey, you know, what are the addresses to your stations? We want to feed your people. So there's a lot of things, a lot of
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Chief Okunna?
Morning, sir. As everybody else has always alluded to, beating bushes, diet time, putting up here. We're making a little bit of progress. We've reached out to some of our corporate partners. I've been dealing with process. Create hands and eye. We're working with corporate officers, FBI, FDA. Sure, and they can be assisted in federal, that's what I do, make some fun calls, Russian Russian assistance. So while we had you on the phone, I've got us guys make corporate products. And you make masks. But we're not sure about having some other plant. Today, this morning, I had to be in G to pick up some masks. Now, you have to be able to determine what level of action you're gonna be. But I feel that the best if you let it roll down. So we'll go ahead and give you a look at it, you know, obviously, take health department, pretty maybe even hospitals, y'all think about this.
Large quantity, Eddie, or?
I, I don't know. I don't think I was told that. But I think if it's usual, I think it would be put in. Great, great. I tell you, you know, we've created relationships over a long period of time. Kimpak has donated Kimpak. And also Echo Lab. Echo Lab is also helping us here. They've been a great partner. And
They, and they manufacture a volley demo of sanitizer stuff for the hospital, right? All the time. That's one of their main thoughts.
Restaurants and
So in our conversations, P and G says, what are you thinking about us being able to make some type of a white, disinfecting white? We, we have the bulk material, but we don't have the chemicals. Hold on.
We're together.
So it's like a phone call. So we, we're, we're connecting those dots. Then we're stepping out of the way and let them do what they do while we're doing it, facilitating those relationships. And I, I'm really sure you think this.
The other person I thought that would probably be willing to partner up with us too a little bit would be Orguil. Should they supplier, could be for gloves and gowns. Cause they're Tavex suits, I guess, right?
Yes, some of them.
But the gloves, for sure.
They're probably Tavex and
Could be against and they're not a manufacturer, but they are a distributor.
So
A goggles, another place.
So, you know, we've, we've been trying to work with, you know, you know, all the fire fleets, EMS agencies. Just trying to get everybody kind of like maybe on the same page, you know. We're, we're following the ambulance authorities protocol for, uh, action. They have a preferred policy. We spoke yesterday with all the fire chiefs, officers, all. They're just, say, look. So we're all on the same page, you know, so we're all trying to do the same thing. They have a real good conversation. And they're very positive. So we're, we're heading in the right direction as far as trying to get our people protected. Worked hard to be able to do that. I'm gonna tell you, I have some concerns. Uh, I've been working on this pretty hard. And it's between the nursing homes and reaching out to them. Asking them to run their plan, pass me, tell me what you're doing, tell me what you're capable of. And I think that they're, they're very capable, they're, they're, they're on, they're on spot. But I know that, it's like in Morgan County, two days ago, so just asking them, look, please check with your employees, make sure everybody's healthy. Do you have the ability to perform? What, what procedures do you have in place? And so far, I've not been able to speak with everyone on the net, but so far, I've been very comfortable with
Yeah, because Yeah, because every time employee comes in, should be asked questions, right?
Yes. If anybody comes in that building, that's what they're, and they're also following the advice of their medical director. So the competency level there is, I, I think, very, very high. And I'm comfortable on hearing. Uh, I've been working with the rescue mission, try and increase and check their protocols, help them review those protocols and make them strong. But one thing that concerns me, we out today doing this, is I know that we have some small camps. And I'm wanting these camps today, let them know how important it is, how serious it is. And that one in some field, you can take, make them, don't be afraid, right? So I've, I've been in contact with the city crews, with their, where they suspect people are, how they, they're already passed.
Couple that I know of who want to catch them.
But, but this, the transient population, that concerns me. A lot of times they may not know exactly what's going on. Sometimes they don't care. But I just feel that we need to make that face-to-face comment or discussion. They know if somebody cares, they can be jumped off. I do have, uh, currently, uh, actually, you guys have an hour and a half of, I've got two employees quarantined. One had traveled outside. And I got another one that just called me before I came here, his son is sick. Traveling, testing right now. So he's already been told he's seven days. Plus my secretary, she's been out, sick. He's hoping, hoping tomorrow.
So first step is quarantine for seven days for, because they've been in direct contact with someone they think could be, or one employees outside the country, so they run a test on them or are they just quarantined for seven days to make sure they don't create fever?
He has the symptoms that are, have kind of reached the trigger point. And until they get that test result, that's for seven days.
As the child.
Right, sir. So, uh, we've, we've been doing, trying to, trying to think ahead, uh, solve some problems that we know are coming down.
And chief, your part-time employees are very much just like brands. They're, they're working full-time somewhere else. So you have these two employees that's being quarantined for safety purposes. Very hard for you to be able to pull up somebody from part-time and say, I need you full-time if you're, it's not gonna happen, right?
It's, it's not. Uh, but so far, of course, say the one, I just want, so far, we've been okay. Other than.
One of the things I meant to tell Brian, say something to Brian about, when Davis and I spoke about it, I think Mr. Ryan was in the room as well, about just starting a separate line item in our budget for anything that costs that were occurring because of the COVID nineteen, so it's easier to keep track of. So that memo will be going out and I understand if anything that could fall under that category, we have accounting on it from day one rather than going back and trying to pull all the information back. We might want to cross-reference it, but hope to set up a definitely.
We should be able to shoot. I've seen. But, uh, I mean, that's, 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 that's the biggest thing, you know, that going on, you know, Randy, Randy, in fact, very talented. We're, we're doing what we do, honestly, out of the air.
I asked Randy a question, I asked you, how you doing with Berkeley and Morton Counties? Or any interaction, I mean, Jefferson and Morton Counties? Any interaction there?
We haven't, um. I've not spoken to, uh, Morton County. We did speak to, uh, one of the deputy directors, I think, Jefferson, they had called and required some of the things that we were doing.
I think I forgot to ask, it's still taking about four days to get the test results back. Have anybody tested, is that right? Seven days?
They're saying minimum, they're saying four, but it's actually seven to ten.
All right. So are you wanting to check with Orgil or do you want Tracy to check with Orgil to see if there's anything that they can help us with?
I, I, I'm checking that.
If you would, then check with them. All of that stuff on this, these three items on this list are good.
But, you know, thank, thank you all for your support.
You the central contact person, everybody that needs to work. You have one, or is everybody doing their own thing?
Uh, locally, they should fire all of us. We would, that's, that's how we would. Help. All health departments, hospitals, not the utility. I, I mean, come. Those requests, actually, that's now the people, breakers. We're, yeah, we're, we're helping the city police, the sheriff's office, our, well, we have. Also, we're looking at, to you, yes. We have, we use it.
Let's see, heard about that.
So I watched a few minutes of it, we're crazy, but hopefully.
Okay. Share with us, what's the process? What, what are they trying to say?
Well, what I saw, they do is simply, you spend more time on the thick call, which they want. I said, I'm, I'm thinking, the virus.
Something next day. Well, I, be like, then that's your stuff.
The next day, actually, look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
And that's, and that's what I was thinking, and that's, that's one of the things I was thinking about with the ultraviolet. If you could use that on the inside and outside of those masks to kill germs with the ultraviolet, that, that, that may be a way to, you know, I don't know how the hell you know if it works.
I guess it almost have to be off the tester.
Well, both my favorite.
I almost do it off a tester.
I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how you test it, but I do know that the ultraviolet is supposed to kill viruses and, you know, germs. I mean, just like sanitizer, I guess, ninety-nine percent, they say, they always have to have one percent in case something fails or something, probably with everything out there. But if there's a way to use ultraviolet, I can see how a huge ultraviolet light could be major, major time saving sanitizer inside of the handle. To be able to, you know.
Flood it with that.
And it only takes, it only takes like a second pass on something to, to basically kill the virus or kill the germ. What it does, it just separates and it dies and something.
Disrupts the genetic material. What's that?
It disrupts the genetic. Okay. I thought separated, but disrupts, okay. But, you know.
I was reading about it.
Of course, that was the case, you just lay it out in your yard during the sunny day.
Yeah.
We haven't hit too many, there's a.
We need a little sunshine.
A lot of rain this week. Well, the warm weather's come. Yeah, it's, it's come, or so is the rainy season. So we gotta get through that, get that coming first.
But, but at, at the end of the day, you know, I think the thing that, of course, please, hopefully. Well, we're just. Make alcohol, that'd be big. Also have bottling companies here, probably bottle hand sanitizer pretty quickly. In the smaller volumes.
Think the problem that they're ready to, P and G have standards, both high.
We have the other bottling company here too. I'm just saying.
We might have a whole field together.
You have several, but I was thinking if, if Vico Lab has, or mixing it to big bats. Well, you know, there's. Two bottling companies that we have here, might be able to produce it into small volumes.
So I spoke, I spoke with a local distillery, um, yesterday, and they're, they're actually trying, they have the ability to, um, they have the alcohol, obviously, that they can make sanitizer out of, but they don't have the other parts. And they said that, um, their issue right now is getting the materials and the, uh, and the permitting to allow them to do it. That's the problem they're having. But, um, they have, and I guess it's some aloe or something that they mix with it. That's the issue he's having. He's got all kinds of alcohol, um, you know, he can just fire it still up and make, you know, another fifty gallons of it if he needs, so that's not an issue. But, um, but the issue he's having is the other part of it. And I spoke with him about eight, eight, ten days ago and said, hey, don't you figure out a way to do this while he's, and working on it, still can't, can't come up with the, uh, raw materials.
He probably generates ethanol and sanitizer, likes purple alcohol.
Two things. I don't know how that works.
It's his case.
Drink this. All right. For chief? Thank you, sir. Catch me right after this meeting, talk about good places. Eddie? All right. Anything else?
Mr. President, we can give you just a couple of real quick updates on our part. Or would you like to do orders?
Uh, with orders, I'm expecting a phone call from a local guy who's dealing with. Hold this one.
But thank you very much.
Just take an order.
I'm sorry, too many orders. But I prepared an order based on what you did day before yesterday, if it's all right, the problem with it. I appreciate if you're signing it and get it down to your small room table.
Is this, is this something that you want to motion or do I have authority to do it if I'm given the direction?
I think we got that yet. And you have, you have authority under.
Right. Yeah. And this is the order regarding public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearings and the planning commission, right? Maybe.
We may, we may.
Talked about that.
Yes, so it was.
Two. And that was my wife, by the way, at Black, or at that, uh, coffee shop, getting out to get me a cup of coffee.
Like, if you want, just usual.
Yeah. And, and, and you know how creative they're doing down at Black Dog? They took a tote, they took a tote, put it halfway in a window, sealed the whole thing up. They have a lid on their side and a lid on this side. And that's how you can go up and order coffee, they can hear you through the window. And then you open it up and you, or get your coffee out, but the credit card thing is outside. So you put the credit card swipe in and hit the button and take care of it all right there. You don't have no transaction other than them opening the thing and setting the coffee in and you receive.
Oh, great, great. All right, we'll be talking to Evans with regards to this order. Uh, there may be, uh, times when we want to call the developer, whoever, for the commission and say, we'll, we'll call you when it's your time out. We'll, we'll make a telephone call to you at this number. Rather than have them come in, because she, she was counting up for this one, I think she said twenty-three, probably twenty-three, sort of people, I was doing that. Do it that way.
But I think that the thing that we did here, sanitize people's hands before they come in the door is a great process for someone to do that in that meeting as well. All right, that should have known to take care of.
Just, uh, just a couple of real quick things and then counsel. Last, end of last week, um, we put the, actually Chad put the request out of social media that we were in need of hand sanitizer. Um, we had one thousand five hundred one-ounce bottles of, um, hand sanitizer donated.
Do we have sat, hand sanitizer at all, like the, all the stations?
We do.
I, I noticed it was not in the basket.
Supermodel.
Really?
Yeah. Twenty seconds, as we're going. We actually found two Correll, like a big dispenser said stand on the floor that are now at the entrance to this building and to the judiciary. So, um, so we've distributed that. Um, yesterday was your first day of the new building procedures. We had some hiccups at the very beginning, as we expected, but after that, it went very, very well. We had thirty-six people that needed the services at one hundred West King. Um, you got the email from Rick Pill yesterday, who's very appreciative. We had eighty-four people that used the judicial center, uh, twenty-eight people that used the DRC, which was mostly drug testing. Um, we're still doing a lot of teleconferencing, um, through that and forty-two for the Dunn Building. We had thirteen that needed planning services, four that needed engineering services, two came to the council, they probably just needed information. One IT, two fiduciary, two fire ward, fifteen ambulance, or fifteen tax department, which was the winner yesterday. Um, six assessors and one ambulance. We have, um, we've ordered two cases of, they're called Sanitabs from United Labs. They're, it's a, it's an industrial strength sanitizer, um, that's known, that's clinically proven to kill MERS and SARS. Um, they're expensive, uh, it's seven hundred dollars for two cases, but we're gonna use it to sanitize a lot of the hard surfaces in all of our public buildings. We've also ordered six cases with four gallons of each of, uh, industrial strength bleach that all the floors will be done. We were trying to get hard surface wipes, but of course, that's not, you know, we're having a hard time finding those. Um, our, our biggest challenge ahead of us will be the primary election.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Gary has been working, um, with Donnie on whole worker training. You want to just explain briefly what, the way it, way we're trying to do it?
We're starting to say, for, for Donnie and the county clerk's office, they're tasked with the formal process of training three hundred plus, any workers, any retirement or in a, in a, in a, so, 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 one of the things that we're looking at, and by the way, I think the county clerk's office, they're, and them by themselves, they're not getting a lot of absolute, much like yourself. We should have started by saying for, for Donnie and the county clerk's office, they're tasked with the formal process of training three hundred plus any workers in his retirement or in a, in a training room and so and so, which shows one of the things that we're looking at, and by the way, I think the county clerk's office, they're, they're on them by themselves, they're not getting a lot of absolute direction, much like yourself. They open and wing it, so one of the things we're looking at are webinars. For those who are comfortable self-paced remotely, watching them, uh, you have to be able to validate who's on them, so we have to provide a process for the coworkers, say, I attended and I did it at two AM. Uh, second thing is providing spaces for no more than ten to do a remote presentation, for instance, here, you got a training room downstairs where Donnie from his desk could present to the screen. Practically place persons in this room, so we get ten at a time, uh, we're looking at this room, the training room downstairs, second floor of one hundred, uh, so we could essentially get thirty people at three locations with Donnie at his desk going training, so.
How long is the training?
Uh, it's an hour or so, I believe, is there? Uh, um, and, and lastly, the, the one that we're talking about placing on YouTube would be self-paced. We're trying to leverage technology, and that's just, that, the county clerk staff, they get a bit.
But, and currently while we're on that, I'm trying to stay in touch with Donnie on, on the election and stuff like that through our secretary of state, Mac Warner, AG's office. President Morrissey, of great respect for both of them. I've said that the, um, election is going, and so Donnie and I was trying, or Donnie, I was. There with him one day about trying to figure out where to hold elections, that's a situation coming up. I'm trying to look at that, uh. You can't have, right now currently, well, I'm not so, so sure whether we'll let you in the building to have the election or pay, may. Not, well, that's something you can't plan.
Well, I was wondering. A lot of our polling places are in schools.
Schools and churches.
And if the Board of Education says, no, you can't, then what are we doing?
And currently, that's their answer. Not so much thinking, no, you can't, if it was the, the election was, the day that I asked them, the answer would have been. So. We gotta have a backup planning, gotta, gotta get it going pretty quickly, so. But anyway.
You know, one thing that they have made. Is that everybody. Is eligible to use absentee ballots, I picked up six yesterday for. Failing them. We're all about that, too. Do have to mark that you're ill, but they understand that you may not be, uh, probably aren't. That is one good way to get the vote in early, to take the pressure off. Off the poll worker.
Um, yesterday Tammy and Steve Boback were on the door when I went down at noon, put to the mic, please.
Oh, you're in front. You can, you can stand back if you like.
At that point, they had, um. Had some activity, I think it got busier in the afternoon, but I think everyone was very cooperative, very appreciative of the fact that we were open to provide service.
Seventy-five percent of county courthouses are closed?
They are. So.
Maybe more than that, I don't know.
We're very appreciative of the efforts that this council is trying to take to keep local citizens and businesses supported.
I'm sort of on the same.
Right, so, and I do appreciate you and Steve.
Oh, you're welcome. And everybody was sort of happy to bring in sanitizer, and stay away from people.
I did get her a baby thermometer, and as you know, that, you know, how they're used. We also found two large, um, barrels of hand sanitizer that has more than sixty percent alcohol, um. Down in storage. So we, we've ordered one hundred one ounce bottles, empty one ounce bottles, we're gonna try to, um, put at least three hundred, uh, if it works, at least three hundred one ounce bottles of hand sanitizer together, so that when poll workers have to work, and we can give, at least give poll workers hand sanitizer.
How are you feeling?
We, we haven't figured that.
Use a good, good basting syringe.
Okay. Um, so we're, we're trying to.
And they're gonna press us all for servicing.
Right. Um, and kind of follow up to one of the conversations that we had, um, actually two more things, uh, the Lama software rollout, we had hoped mid-April, that might be a little bit later now, because. They're all, they're spread out, and they've been told, no, no business travel, so all of the folks that were gonna be here for training, um, are not available to, to, to come here, and when I'm not sure we would want them to come here anyway. Um, said that if this continued, that the self-quarantined and the no-travel policy stays in the place, they will work with us to try to do, um, training remotely, um, so not to delay the project too much. And then the second thing is, I just, just before I came in here this morning, received notification that the Federal Department of Health and Human Services was cyber attacked. Um, fortunately, no data was lost and the networks were not disabled, but what we feared could occur. As, so while they were busy dealing with the COVID-19, someone tried to cyber attack the Department of Health and Services. That's all I have.
Uh, one question I have is I saw on the internet, uh. I have a question, there's about early dismissal of prisoners and things, is that gonna affect us, is that?
I know they're, they're talking about nonviolent offenders, they're looking at that, but I, I.
I just threw that out, because I saw that rather recently.
And, and you did see the notice that their precinct county schools did close for the rest of. Of the school here, they have nothing back in session. Seems like a pattern happening around the country right now.
Eric, anything else? That's off, Mr. Hardhart.
I guess I'll make a motion to recess.
You are recessed.